All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Benson?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Olympia?
Winter?
Here.
Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda that will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 5th, 2016. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $19,029.62 and payroll expenses of $108,984.85. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Remove the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Councilman Sherman, seconded by Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winter?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item six, reports from boards and officers. Item A is the Alpha Arena Authority Meeting on 12/6/2016. Were you there, Joe Don?
I was not able to attend that meeting, was you?
Um, I was not there either. Let's see what's in here.
Where is our representative? I thought he was going to come with us. Just to report and talk.
In my conversations with Mr. Hood, they've had a lot of discussions and no decisions yet at this point. So their ability to answer questions, I guess, with any definitive answers has been limited. I encourage one of the items on their agenda. Where is it?
Whether they've made any decisions or not, Mayor, I believe he should still be coming and reporting to us on what they're talking about and what they're leaning towards or not towards. And if he isn't going to be able to come and report to us, I think we need to replace him as councilor with a different representation.
I think Mr. Hood is really looking out for what's... In my conversations, I encourage all of you to call him if you'd like, any of our appointees. I don't believe that there's anything that... There's discussions is what they're having. And so I don't believe that until they start making decisions, he feels like whatever he says one week might change the next.
Well, like Councilman Anderson said, we're on the way for discussions. I mean, studying how open the state of the person, what was it?
Okay.
What did he say about?
Noted. And I don't... I'm not trying to push that off.
And I think Mike does a good job too, especially if Joe Don or somebody's not there. I mean, some of it I agree with.
Let me see what I can do.
Well, it was a relatively routine meeting. There were a couple of action... Discussion and action items. One was over the usage of the VFW property. And the other was over the construction of turf runways, the A-Turf Runway. The usage of the VFW property was mainly to help maintain weed control of the property in partnership with the county. I think the county uses it to some degree for issues when there are events going on at the arena. And then just helping try to maintain that property. The other discussion item was over the development of a turf runway. The board was relatively insecure about proceeding with that until we've got some of our other projects closed out to see how they come in as far as budget constraints are concerned. So that's kind of been... They're doing some preliminary research over design, but they are holding off on doing anything, making any kind of action on that till the T-Hanger project mainly is completed. And that'd be the bulk of the airport meeting.
Council have any questions for Mr. Dunham? Thank you, Joe Don. Alpha Public Library Board Meeting from December 13th.
I was unable to attend that meeting. By looking at... It was a relatively... Again, it was a relatively routine meeting. By looking at the agenda, they did consider buying a few bookshelves and a couple of new equipment. I think the library was working with the Friends Group to help get some of that accomplished and just relocating computers into the youth area from other areas of the library.
Council have any questions regarding the library meeting? Thank you, Joe Don. The Alpha Municipal Cemetery Board Meeting on December 14th.
On the 14th, we met for a quarterly meeting. There was a lot of discussion about the cleanup that we did at the end of November. The airport... I mean, the cemetery board did decide and vote to limit those cleanups in any future cleanups to just flowers that were on the ground. If they are drapes over the headstone or they are flowers, whether live or fake, in the vases that are attached to the headstone, to leave them... To not pick them up, even if they become deteriorated and just sticks, wire sticks in the vase, not to be able... Not to remove any of that. We... Our staff is working to put that along with some other items into a standard operating procedure so that that can be... Give it... Gives staff a little guidance on the way we're going to maintain our cemetery with some other discussions, grass height, cutting length, how often... The length of time between cuts and things like that, just as a standard operating procedure. Once those are developed, we will present those to the board and also will be posting those on our website, Facebook pages for the public to be aware of. And that was the bulk of the conversations at that meeting.
Does council have any questions regarding the cemetery board meeting? Finance Committee meeting from this evening. Mr. Benson?
Hey, with our meeting, we went over the claims. We went over our investments. We talked at length about what we know so far of the water project on the southwest corner of town, how we might be able to pay for that project, the costs involved. And we hit a little bit on the timekeeping system again and we're looking at... Trying to decide for sure if that's what we want to recommend or what kind of systems actually go to. Brandon or Bobby have any to add to that? That's my report.
Council have any questions from the finance committee? Thank you, Bryce. Mayor's report. Did attend the... As well as Mr. Sherman and Ms. Hamilton. The staff awards presentations and dinner end of last week. Very good. I thought it went very well and I want to commend the, you know, all the staff on their achievement as well as the staff that helped to make sure that put that event on as well as thanks to some of the local businesses that made contributions to help us with honoring our employees who had 25, 30 years' service, some of them. And so it was nice. It was good to pull that one up and have that recognition dinner again. I did talk to a few of the employees that thought it was really nice as well, so they were grateful for it. And that will conclude my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. Business managers report. Mr. Dunham?
Just have a few things I'd like to report on. One, our T-Hanger construction project at the airport. Visited with the contractor today. We're about 75% complete with that project. The final batch... The final leg of the ramp is expected to be poured this week should weather conditions hold. Of course, that is a weather-sensitive topic project, so we're still working on that. We do have a couple of projects going on at ARC that we're still compiling numbers on and getting information for the board. One of those is the shade structures. They did ask for us to research metal structures instead of fabric top structures. We're having trouble with some of the vendors getting back to us on that. And we are looking at... We met with top dressing... The top... The field top dressing company last week. That is going to be a project that's going to be... How fast we can move on that depends on the water issue, how fast we can solve our pressure issues out there. Going to be real hesitant to try to do $60,000 or $70,000 worth of top dressing if we can't get water on it to get it watered appropriately. And that's what we're working on. And so we've kind of put that project on hold till we have some more of these meetings with... Get a firm plan on our water pressure issue. Right now, our water pressure meets the minimum standards out there as far as DEQ is concerned, but it does not meet the standards required to make... As far as what sprinkler companies have told me, does not meet the requirements to operate a sprinkler system effectively and get the coverage that we need to get on our sprinkler systems. So we're still working on that. Have surplus property equipment bids out. If the bid is out, we will be opening those bids on the 22nd at 2:00 p.m. and hopefully dispersing several vehicles plus an office full of stuff over here at the professional building of tables and things that we hope to be able to no longer call ours after the 22nd. And Mayor and council, that would be my report for this evening. Be happy to answer any questions.
Will you remind everybody the offices be closed?
Offices will be closed on Monday, the 26th and Monday, the 2nd in observance of Christmas and New Year's Day.
Council have any questions for Mr. Dunham? Thank you, Joe Don. Item number seven is discussion and action on the waiving of permits and fees related to the Freedom West Community Development Corporation renovation of 422 Flynn Street. There's in the packet there, you can see that we're anticipating that we'll be waiving fees of about $1,613. This is the old furniture store that they're looking to remodel down here on the square. And a letter in here from Dr. Decker requesting that fees be waived as well as the breakdown of what the fee waivers for Freedom West would be. Electrical plumbing, building, and mechanical permits as well as 30-yard roll-off. I would entertain a motion to waive these permits. Freedom West has invested a lot in the community and continue to do so.
And in the... I mean, the renovation on this project alone is estimated at 1.2 million, so...
What's this going to be exactly, is it very specific? Business or is it just going to be fronts people can rent or? Yes. It'll be developed into inhabitable space so that it can then be...
You see, it seems like to me when I was visiting with Dr. Decker, she'd told me the frontage of it was the retail type development with the back of it being kind of some office type development, if I remember correctly.
I'll make a motion to approve the waiving of permits and fees related to Freedom West Community Development Corporation renovation of 422 Flynn Street. Second. I have a motion by Mr. Eckhart, seconded by Mr. Benson, to waive permits and fees related to the Freedom West Community Development Corporation renovation of 422 Flynn Street. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Item eight is discussion and action to change monthly meetings to once a month. I don't know if we'll get all of this accomplished this evening. I thought I'd start this out... Oh, well, this was brought up last week for our last meeting at the end of the meeting to have us discuss this, that it may be advantageous for us to switch to a monthly meeting rather than a twice-a-month meeting in that it's... This item would be placed on this agenda to discuss. I thought I'd start by asking how long you guys want to discuss on this and if we... Before we either table it or take action this evening. And that was mainly because I thought maybe some people had other obligations to get to this evening, but... Well, let's discuss.
Well, if I understand right, if we chose to do this, we'd need to actually give direction to our councilor to draw up a new or to change the ordinance so that we could actually go to one meeting and we wouldn't actually be a pregnant until we approved that order to change.
Part of the, I guess, positives of this would be freeing up the staff. The staff spend a lot... Spend a lot of time preparing council packets and everything for the meetings every time we meet. Joe Don spends almost the whole week getting ready for council meetings. This would free up all of the staff in the office here to, you know, do their jobs and work on other projects that need to be getting done. Obviously, for us, if we need to have special meetings, we can have special meetings if there's business that we need to conduct outside of our normal meeting. We also, I guess, prior conversations, there were obligations that needed to be discussed twice a month in council that are no longer present, so... Our payroll, however, probably...
Right. Payroll or payable... With our purchasing ordinance, the way we passed it, payroll and payables get paid every year. You're just acknowledging those payments after they've been made at the council meeting. So like today's payments, everything... All $216,000 that was approved today, those payments have been made.
So if we went to one meeting, Joe Don, would it be better to go on the third Monday or would it even be better to look at moving it to the fourth Monday?
That's up to the council. I would not...
You're talking about for financing?
For finance committee...
For meeting?
For finance presentations and things like that, certainly the third is going to be better than the first. You know, for example, in January, there's no way I can have a finance report ready for December on January 3rd. Just can't... Yeah, there's not enough time. We can... So the third... At least the third meeting would be my recommendation if you're going to go to... The third Monday, if you're going to go to that. There are currently... If you change it to the fourth, there are some other meetings that'll have... That'll be impacted. Normally, our fourth... The fourth meeting is scheduled for a planning commission meeting to meet when required. But, you know, so that it would impact that meeting that it may have to be moved. If you just stick to the first or the third, the only meeting that is impacted is the council meeting.
Questions, everybody else have?
So it says for discussion and actions, I guess, we want to do something we can.
We can either ask...
I mean, the action I think we would do... If you were going to take action, the action you would have would be direct council and staff to prepare an ordinance revision for consideration.
Then I'll make a motion... I'll just make a motion to ask our councilor and staff to prepare ordinance change, go to once-a-month meeting with the Alpha City Council and make that meeting on the third Monday.
I have a motion by Mr. Benson, seconded by Dr. Hannaford, to direct the city attorney and staff to prepare ordinance reflecting a once-a-month meeting on the third Monday for consideration by council.
Just so I'll know, same time?
Yes.
6:30?
Yes. Right. Or I would make that in my motion, but I'm intending that to be changed.
Still second that? Okay. As stated. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winter?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winter?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Benson?
Item 10 is discussion and action on the appointment of Mr. Kelly Parker as board member on the Alpha Airport Commission. I've spoken with Mr. Parker. He is willing to serve on the Airport Commission. I did inform the Airport Commission that would be on this agenda for our meeting this evening. So I present to you that recommendation and would entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Kelly Parker as board member on the Alpha Airport Commission. Second. I have a motion by Dr. Hannaford, seconded by Mr. Winter, to appoint Mr. Kelly Parker as a board member of the Alpha Airport Commission. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Winter?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Item 10 is discussion and action on the appointment of Mr. Brandon Sherman to the Alpha Recreation Complex Board. I've spoken to Mr. Sherman and he also is willing to serve in this capacity and I would entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Brandon Sherman to the Alpha Recreation Complex.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Eckhart, seconded by Ms. Hamilton, to appoint Brandon Sherman to the Alpha Recreation Complex Board. Mr. Brandon Sherman. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Item 11 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. If anybody would like to make a comment to address the council, you may introduce yourself and we'll give you a lot of time. There being none, we'll move on to item 12, remarks and inquiries by council members. I've got one thing. And Mr. Sherman and I will be attending the Mayor's Congress in January in Guthrie. That's where mayors and other municipal officials get together and discuss public policy issues to send on to the Capitol for our state representatives and senators. If you guys have anything that you would like for us to champion for, you know, our community while we're there, please pass us along that information enough so that we can speak knowledgeably and we would be happy to carry that with us. And that's January 20th, 1920. Catch us before then.
I want to make a follow-up comment on the arena and what I said. I don't have anything against Mike Hood. I'm sure he's doing the best he can do for us. It's just, you know, we hear things out in the public or on the street that they're talking about doing this, they're talking about doing that, and we don't know whether it's noise or whether it's the truth, you know? Now, it could just be easier for him than all of us calling him and him having to give us eight different... Same stories eight different times to come down here and report to us, even though they haven't made any.
And that's his concern, is the number of stories that are going around town. There's partial truths and some of it.
And one way for him to help take care of that would be to come down here and talk to him, I think.
I'll talk to him. I've been...
I just wanted to clarify that. It's nothing against him. I believe he's probably doing the best he can for us, because I'd like to see him down here in Guthrie.
I will take that.
I would just like to comment that the Christmas dinner was great. I think we had a great turnout. And thank you, Joe Don, and the rest of the staff for putting that on and showing our appreciation for employees of the city.
Well, I appreciate that, but the thanks needs to go to the staff that's sitting behind us and a couple of others, not me. They did the lion's share of the work. I just said... They said, "Can we?" And I said, "Yes." So they did the lion's share of that work. I just stood up here and gave away the prizes.
Kind of looked like the good guy.
Yeah. But thank you, and I will pass that on.
Anything else? We're adjourned. We'll open the meeting now of the Alpha Utility Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Benson?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Valencia? Winters?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at A U A meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December fifth, two thousand and sixteen. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of fifty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents, and payroll expenses of twenty-four thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-nine cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda, second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, second by Mr. Sherman, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Okay, we'll close the meeting of the Utility Authority and open the meeting for the Alva Economic Development Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Benson?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Dunham?
Here.
Valencia? Winters?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at A D A meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December fifth, two thousand and sixteen. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of twenty-one thousand, one hundred dollars and seventy-six cents, and payroll expenses of six thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman, second by Dr. Haniford, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, we are adjourned.
We do have a water.